Absolutely. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Rutland Town on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Tonight, we are beginning the meeting by nominating a chairperson for our Select Board for the year. Do I hear anyone?
Yes, I move to point Mary Ashcroft as Chair.
Good.
Is there any other nominations? I hear one for, or one and a second for Mary. Is there any other nominations? Any more nominations? Okay, all in favor, say aye for Mary as Chairman.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Mary, you are our Chairperson. Congratulations. I hand the meeting over to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Carrie, and thank you, Select Board members, and welcome, Don Trophi. I will now entertain a motion for Select Board Clerk. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Joe Donardo.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to nominate Joe Donardo. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? If not, all of those in favor of Joe Donardo for Select Board Clerk, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. So let's, we have a pretty full agenda tonight. We've got some reorganizational things to do. And at 6:30, I think the Select Board members, hopefully you all got my email, we're going to be visiting with the Diamond Run Mall folks, Joey Anthony and Michael Sternberg, because we would like an update on where the mall is. So we'll break from whatever we're doing and listen to them at 6:30. Okay, so the orders are in here. I have signed them. If they will be in the Town Clerk's office, I encourage the Select Board members to come in, go through them, and sign them. And that order of business is taken care of. Next item is the approval of the Select Board minutes for March 1st. Is there any motion on accepting the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
JP and Sharon to approve and second. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not? JP, were you absent?
Sharon, no.
Oh, right. I'm sorry, the absent was in her. Okay. So Sharon, you probably shouldn't second. Is there somebody else who can second?
That's right, Mary.
So, okay. Motion's made and seconded. This is accepting the minutes of March 1st. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and I'll say aye. Sharon, you should abstain, and Don, you weren't on yet, so.
I voted aye.
We still have three. Okay, so the minutes have been accepted. Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have any questions from the floor or public comment? And these would be from people who are not otherwise on the agenda for this evening.
Mary?
Chris?
I can't find the hand raising symbol here. If one wanted to make comments on items that were on the agenda, do they do that now, or do they wait for items that are on the, as the agenda items come up?
Can you tell me which agenda item you want to comment on?
On the appointments, on the Select Board appointments.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Chris.
So I'll defer until then.
Yes, please. Any other public comment on items not on our agenda? Okay, moving right along. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Bill.
So, we have quite a, quite a list of items in, in the packets that went out to the Board members. There's some additional items that I sent you by email earlier, and then just a couple of topics that came in even since then. So we'll go through these to make sure we're all, we'll probably discuss them as we go along. If that's okay with you, Mary, just we don't get lost in the number of topics.
Yes, please.
So in the, in the Board packet, the first item, as usual, is the current meeting schedule, which just has the Board meeting on it, and then all of the pending agenda items for the committees. It should be up to date, so if anybody wants to add anything to it or needs something changed, just let me know. Number two, we put in, number two and three are a little related. Two is the current purchasing policy guidelines for the town. Any, any, any person we want to make, this is a good chance just to go over it, and related to that is the Preferred Vendor List, which we have been voting on annually that go along with the purchasing policy. So two and three are up for discussion. If you want to do the approval of the Preferred Vendor List, we can do that.
Yeah, I think if the Board is ready, and you do get this in advance, because each year we go through our Preferred Vendor List, and you'll notice that in the purchasing policy, then in Section D, the Preferred Vendor is, if we're dealing with a Preferred Vendor, then we are exempting ourselves from going through some of the processes of the purchasing policy. And I think, Bill, you went, you went through our Preferred Vendors with the Department Heads?
I did not go over the whole list with every department. Some of them overlap and, and but no, I did not, but there are, there hasn't been any issues that I've heard of with either needing to, neither put people on or take people off.
Okay. So I will, okay, I'll entertain a motion, go for it.
Yeah, I'll move that we reapprove the purchasing policy and the Preferred Vendor List going first. Do we do it yearly? I guess it's by the year?
The Preferred Vendor List, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, yes, Mary.
Okay, Don.
Just a question as to how, how does one get on or be removed from the Preferred Vendor List?
Under our purchasing policy, it says, "Approval shall take into account general availability of the goods or services, quality and cost of the goods and services, and the ability, capacity, and skill of the vendor demonstrated under prior contracts with the Town of Rutland." So, we, you know, these are folks that we might have done business with, and we were impressed with their quality. And that's why.
Okay, so if somebody's, if somebody's not on that list and wants to get on, how would they, how would they get to show that they could do the job or would have a better price if they're not on the list?
Well, they can make a request to the Select Board to be added and be in touch with Bill, and then Bill would put it on our next agenda.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, or discussion? If not, all in favor of the Preferred Vendor List, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.
All right. Up next is the, the Town officials and the ones that are elected. The first page is the officials that were either elected or reelected at the, most recent election two weeks ago. So that's the first page. And then throughout it are some that I've highlighted that are all up for reappointments that we have specifically for. And then there's also the Ware of Coal and Tree Ward and Townkeeper positions that we also do.
Okay. So I think when we get to Barbara Nois pulling, we can, we can look at the Planning Commission. Do have an item on the agenda to consider these as a group. What's your preference? Shall we wait until, and just hear the rest of Bill's report and put this aside until later?
Words for me, Mary.
All right, so let's do that. So hang on to that for later. Bill, what's next?
Okay. Number five is from Howard Burgess, and I believe he's on the meeting as well. It's the Certificate to Close the Grand List.
Okay, Howard.
Right there.
Aye.
Now, what this is, is a certificate of of no appeal or suit pending. And what it is, is when the we get to February, the second Tuesday in February, if we don't have any grievances that are still pending or BCA or any of that, then by signing this certificate that we have here, it seals the grand list so that nobody can come and bring anything against us for the rest of the, you know, based on that grand list, they can't bring any lawsuit against us. So it just seals the grand list, and that's what this is all about.
Okay, and this has to be done before April 1st, correct?
Yeah, basically, it's that it becomes effective is, I think, the second Tuesday of February, and then from that point on, we can sign it.
Okay. Do you know of any pending lawsuits?
We have none.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion on this Certificate of No Appeal or Suit Pending. So move.
Second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we all need to sign, or do you just need to sign?
Looks like there are five blanks, so we all need to sign.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of signing the Certificate of No Appeal or Suit Pending, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Mary, you do have the original in the envelope, in the folder there.
Oh, okay. I signed the copy, but I guess, yeah. Okay, what's next?
Next, number six is an updated budget status report from Carrie.
Okay, why don't we hold that until we hear Carrie's report?
Sure. Number seven, right now is just a, for information, it's an Act 250 application filing notice from the Rutland Regional Medical Center for some work they're doing. Doesn't really seem to be, there's going to be an impact on us, a big impact on us, but that's the, just the information I'll file at this point.
Okay.
Number eight, and the two attachments to that all relate to a conversation that Carrie and I had with the City of Rutland Treasurer recently in regards to some delinquent water and sewer accounts for users that were previously billed out of this office. So number eight is a summary of the conversation that the three of us had, and then the other two items are a list of the, the original list of accounts that we did bill out of this office and the current list of delinquencies that they show.
Okay, so are you looking for any action, or are we going to send this to Water Sewer Committee?
We don't need to take any action tonight. It's, it's kind of an important topic, but so it can, it can, it can go to Water and Sewer. We're, we're trying to work with, there's, there's two specific accounts that are a little larger than the others. We're going to try and work with, with those users to help the city, and, but we should talk about this. Kind of relates, it does relate to our water and sewer contract with the city, so there's some specifics now that we need to discuss.
Okay. So it looks like we have a net of $33,195, but that's the aging. That's the first one.
Yeah, so the, the total is, it really is about $42,000. So that's, that's the total delinquent right now. That does, the, the addresses they listed on there from the city one, which, which in the packet is letter A for, under number eight, there are some addresses included in there that we did not bill originally, so those totals are not part of our list. And, but I did provide them with a list of ones that, I'm not sure they have all of them, so that's been a, a challenge to get that list accurate. So I did ask the City Treasurer for, I did provide her with the updated and corrected list, and she was going to go back and rerun it. So that's what we have at the moment. This was what she gave us from March 5th, but some changes need to be made to that, and then obviously, any, any payments they get in the meantime, we would need to know about as well, so.
Okay, good.
Mary, the two largest people that are behind are two businesses that are closed. The Ground Round and the Diamond Run are both, so how do we go about getting funds from places that are not open anymore?
Well, I think that's part of the discussion that the Water and Sewer Committee is going to have to have.
So maybe that should enter into our 6:30 discussion?
It might very well.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's appropriate, because obviously, there's a substantial amount of money there that needs to be taken care of.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
So does anyone have any objection, or would anyone like to make a motion to send this to the Water and Sewer Committee to work on?
Well, I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish, other than talking it to death. If these people don't want to pay, I mean, I don't know, this Water Sewer thing, we don't seem to have much teeth sometimes for getting these things resolved, so, but maybe that's a good place to start, is Water and Sewer. But we need to get right on it.
So I'll treat that as a motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded to send this as a priority to Water Sewer, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thanks. What else have we got?
Okay, the next thing is number nine, that's from the Police Department. That's the current list of their calls for the last two weeks. And that is in their, their new format as well, so the summary for that. And then number 10 is the letter, Mary, I got from you in regard to the Evergreen Cemetery.
Right, let me, let me leave nine until the Chief Dumas comes up, but let me talk about 10 for a minute. I think I had mentioned to some of the Board members individually that I had been approached by a member of the Evergreen Cemetery Association about their financial straits and the requests that they would be making to their city and the town to help contribute with, and they were under the belief that the Evergreen Cemetery was located both in the city and the town. And I came over and Howard walked me through the boundary line issues, and in fact, Evergreen Cemetery is located entirely in the city, not in the town. So there is a statutory requirement when, of maintaining cemeteries that are located within a municipality, but that does not apply to us, because Evergreen is not within our boundaries. It's counterintuitive, I know, but if you, if you have a minute, come on over and have Howard show you the tax map. It's pretty interesting. At any rate, the request did come in, and a revised letter, so basically, it asks the town, although we are not statutorily obligated to at least participate in discussions about the possible future of the cemetery. So there's nothing proposed, other than to, you know, enter into discussions. So what is your pleasure with this letter?
I don't see the town contributing to a cemetery located in the city, especially given the provisions that if the cemetery fails, it reverts back to the municipality where it's located.
Yep.
And the fact is, we do have a cemetery in our town, so.
Well, we have, we have a couple, yeah.
We have a couple. One is well managed, and one is, needs help.
Yeah.
Where's the other one, Joe?
Right next door to the, the Cheney Hill, obviously, that is well managed by Byron and his crew. And the other one is the one right next to Town Hall. That is actually a town cemetery, and I, and we put some money in this, the new budget that starts July 1st, we added some funds in that to start looking after that.
We did.
Okay.
Okay. So shall we just mark this as received on record?
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary, if the Cemetery Association wanted to petition the town voters for assistance, they could do that, right?
They could request an appropriation, as other nonprofit organizations do, yes.
Right, so they would have to go through that whole process of getting on a March ballot and doing all the necessary legwork, and then come up with a sum, and, and the voters of the Town of Rutland would be able to say yea or nay on it.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, all right. So they, they have that, if that's up their sleeve for later on, but at least for now, I'm good with where we're going.
Okay. Okay, what else, Bill?
All right, so a couple, so that's, that should be everything in the packet, and then just a few additional items. We have the information from VLCT on their annual safety grant. We have used that in the past for a variety of items, and we've done very well getting reimbursement through that, so that is again available. I know the Fire Department has already got some items on the wish list. But we, it is, there's no specific due date for the application, other than October 31st, but it does also say, or until we run out of money. So if we would like to do something, we should do it sooner rather than later, and as always, I'll help coordinate that. So from the various departments, we need the item and a quote from a vendor to show the price. Then we submit everything as one application, wait for approval, which we should get, and then once we have approval, we go out and purchase the item, and then we submit the receipt and proof of payment to VLCT, and then we're refunded 50% of the cost. And that can include shipping and, and everything, but no monthly fees, so there's other items we wanted to get, and I know one time we discussed for Byron, like the sewer line camera, that's, is, is, is in there specifically as one of the items that we can get, so we can submit up to $10,000 for up to 50% reimbursement, so I would like to do that, probably within the next two to four weeks. If we can, if we can get that, everybody to put together a wish list and get some quotes, and then we can send it in, hopefully take advantage of that.
Good. So, and you've circulated this among Department Heads?
Yes, I did send out an email to all, all the Department Heads about, about the availability of this.
Okay, and the Select Board members should also be thinking about, you know, your wish list, and, and where whether we should pursue any grant opportunities for items that you may want.
Yep.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, Mary. Is there anything that on there that we might need? I think one year we got some money toward cameras or something, didn't we, Bill?
Oh, oh, yes, we, we did that for a few years, yep.
Yeah, can you, you, do you know of anything that along those lines that we're lacking, that we might need to, you know, that, that would be the municipal government asking for stuff that we would need? I can't think of anything, but you might.
There's not a lot. I mean, we got smoke detectors for the vault, we've gotten, we've gotten surveillance systems for four buildings around town already. We've, we've done pretty, pretty well with it, so if there's any items we, you know, we can look at in terms of, it's, so VLCT does this to help reduce the risk and reduce claims, so if the item can be related to that, so they even do like ergonomic things, so like special chairs can be covered in that up to a certain amount, and then they do fire gear, which we, which we're looking at some, some additional purchasing around that. They'll do office furniture that's needed specially, you know, anything like that that's specially needed, they can, they can do that too, so there's, there's, there's a lot that can be done. We seem to identify the need, and then, you know, go out and source the product and, and apply for it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Yep. So the next, we have a request from an attorney from Velco. They're putting together a project notice for the Rutland North Substation upgrade, and they wanted to know if we would be okay accepting service electronically of the documents, rather than having them mail them all out to us. There's a 45-day notice, and then there's the 248 package, and they wanted to know if we would be okay accepting one or both of those electronically.
And you had a recommendation for us on that?
So I, I had, I told her that, you know, I couldn't give her answer then, that we need to speak with the Board, but that I, I thought we would be appropriate to accept the 45-day notice electronically, but the 248 package, which is a much more substantial amount of documents, we would likely want in hard copy form.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with that. So I'll entertain a motion.
So we would, I would make a motion that we follow Bill's guideline suggestion as to the electronic and paper copies that we receive in the manner he presented to us.
Okay, so electronic for the 45-day notice and hard copy for the application itself?
Yes, sounds good.
Second by JP, second by Sharon. Any discussion? Sharon, did you want to say something?
No, no, I just, I know both of us said it, but I said, go ahead and just take JP.
Okay, all right. Okay, if, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
And Bill, you'd be able, the, the one you get electronically, Bill, you'd be able to forward that to any of us, right?
Yeah, that's, that's not going to be as nearly as substantial a document. It's, it's their notice that they're filing, not the actual filing itself, so, yes, absolutely, fine.
And I think that the other one, that's a lot more paperwork, rather than making copies, just, it'll be available at your office if we need to see it.
Absolutely.
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, good. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we have, we have, both of our guests have joined the call, so if you want to, you want to talk to them now, or do you want me to keep going?
No, well, I think we're just about at 6:30, 6:29, that's pretty close. And we have representatives of the Diamond Run Mall joining us this evening, Mr. Joe Anthony and Mr. Michael Sternberg. And they're kindly going to give us an update on rehabilitation, reconstruction of the Diamond Run Mall. So, Joe or Michael?
Yeah, good, good evening, everybody. This is Joe, and, and I'll start.
Yeah. Good, good evening, everybody. This is Joe and, and I'll start. Uh, uh, so, so let me start with, um, uh, I had patched in and listened in and had it on mute and multitasked until something that I had on my calendar until six. So I had heard of the brief conversation on the water and sewer bill, which by the way, gave me a chance to call my accounting department and ask them what's going on, of course. So, uh, long story short is we never got the bills. I guess, I don't know if they're being delivered to the mall or, or whatever have you, but we're, we don't accept mall, uh, mail at the mall any longer. Uh, Michael did track them down or somebody tracked Michael down on Friday. He has sent the bills over to us as of Monday. Our accounting department is reviewing them as we speak. And, and certainly we're going to pay our water and sewer bills. It looks to be like the last billings maybe from before we closed the mall, something like that. Um, uh, so, so we're in the process of reviewing them and I can, uh, rest assured that we will be paying our water and sewer, sewer bills. Most of them are real small amounts that
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, uh, uh, and then a probably one quarterly bill or a last quarterly bill. So for, first and foremost, I've already told Mike via email to make sure that everybody has a forwarding address. Again, we're taking all mail at um, our office in, in, in Johnstown, Pennsylvania. So, so, um, that's what I would suggest. And, and hopefully that answers your questions. And if you have any additional questions on that, I can certainly answer, answer them before we get into kind of the, the overview. Uh, I hate to start a call with everybody thinking we owe them money and we're, we're dead beats anyways. So, so, uh, any questions on that water and sewer? Does that sound like a plan? I'll be back to you shortly. Um, uh, you know, assuming we, we verify the bills and there's no issues, payment should be made promptly.
Yeah. Would you give us your mailing address, please?
Sure. It's 231 Market Street, Johnstown, Pennsylvania, 15901. And I know Mike still has an office. We don't, we don't get mail. We've had everything forwarded um, either to that address or, or the, our address in New Jersey.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Um, Joey, do you have any questions to follow up on this?
No, I, I think that that's, you know, I always like it when the, uh, we come up with an explanation as to why the bill wasn't paid and they're right on top of it and mailing and with this whole COVID thing, I can see where things get messed up. So we'll take him at his word and six months from now, if it's not paid, then we'll have another discussion. Or maybe six weeks. We'll see how it goes.
It, it won't take six weeks. Uh, uh, hopefully not six days, but, uh, again, we do, we, you know, each, we, we do checks every, once a week. So we missed this week. So it'll probably be next week. Um, and again, we're just going to review the, the bills and verify them. But everybody should also have, and I know, uh, some of the folks stay in touch with Michael, but Michael is our full-time employee who's, 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 uh, job is to kind of make sure stuff like this doesn't happen, but he's in Rutland. He has office hours still in the mall and will supervise kind of construction and demolition and, and, uh, does the showings, et cetera. So, um, um, maybe, um, get everybody Michael's contact information. If anything like that ever happens again, obviously you have, you have my contact information, but Michael, uh, can, can get to it a lot quicker. So.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Good.
So where are we? What, what's up with the mall?
So, 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 um, first of all, I, I don't need to tell everyone in the meeting. Everybody knows the pandemic that we all just went through. Uh, retail and construction in general slowed to a halt. Uh, even the, the, the construction that was commenced, um, was either paused, delayed, or in some instances abandoned. But, um, the good news is, is, um, we do have um, interest and we, we are finalizing a couple of LOIs once we're at liberty to kind of tell everybody what they are, but they're going to be significant. Um, it will be completely different than I think it sits today with a large portion of the property being demoed and/or, um, uh, recommissioned. Um, uh, but, but it will include some retail, um, uh, hopefully a hotel, uh, some restaurants, including some out parcels. Uh, and then one, you know, one or two larger, um, anchors with, with some box tenants. Um, you know, traditional box, uh, tenants. Uh, there is interest, there is demand again, if you will. A matter of fact, a lot of retailers because of the pandemic are behind on store counts. So that's actually helping us finalize. Hopefully finalize the commitments we have, uh, we have here. Um, we're bound, of course, as always with bigger tenants by NDAs and can't disclose until leases are signed, but I'm hopeful. And again, we plan on when we, when we, when we're, have the ability to kind of, uh, present, you know, the redeveloped project, you know, we'll come in and answer questions and give everybody a heads up and obviously go through the proper entitlement channels, but, um, um, you know, we are moving forward. Uh, we are committed, um, you know, to the project and to moving forward. And I think the tenants now are, are getting over what was a, you know, lengthy, lengthy, um, uh, pandemic and, and caused, uh, monkey wrenches in, in all of the plans and pushed everything out, you know, in some instances as long as a year. But, um, um, you know, so far, so good on the rebound and certainly a, you know, a lot of our tenants are are now coming around and doing, uh, new deal counts. So that's the, uh, uh, I'll say.
Okay. Do we have, um, questions from any select board members?
Yes, Mary.
Don.
Um, hi, Joe. Uh, Don Chaffee here. Uh, I'm a new, I'm a new board member, but I'm not new to the Diamond Run Mall. So, uh, it's good to hear the information that you had to offer us this evening. I was just wondering, are you into pre-leasing?
Uh, yes, we're, 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 we're pre-leasing. Um, uh, we have, I don't know, maybe a half dozen or more, uh, LOIs that are being circulated as we speak, uh, with probably 10 behind when we reveal kind of to the market who our anchor tenant is, uh, or anchor tenants are. So yes, we're, we're in the, the LOI stage and, and, um, finalizing LOIs.
As, is this, uh, is this or can this be public information? Because I, I know the community itself is had a lot of questions as to what's happening there. And, uh, uh, I, I noticed that Keith Whitcomb has joined us. So, uh, I, I would hope that this kind of, this kind of information is really, really helpful to the economy of Rutland in general and, uh, certainly Rutland town.
Yeah. A-again, what, you know, certain developers do it in certain ways. A lot will kind of go ahead and divulge a site plan and then, and then hope that, that it, it turns out the way they advertise that we do things a little bit differently. After years' experience, you know, better to kind of, when you put forth a plan, um, um, you know, better be what, uh, is advertised. So we haven't kind of, you know, I haven't went to the, as a matter of fact, the papers called me often and, and but for a couple of comments, you know, we haven't really commented on our overall projects. But certainly I, I think this is a public meeting. So I, I would fathom that somebody from the media is there and certainly, uh, um, um, you know, if, if, um, if, if you give me an avenue for where you want me to let people know that it's being pre-leased, I certainly can do that. I'm just not at liberty to kind of uh, show the site plan yet until it's finalized with our tenants. So.
And we do have thousands. We do have thousands of square feet. They say we do have thousands of square feet that are going to be occupied in some, in some future date here on the horizon.
Yeah. Yeah. I actually.
Thank you, Joe.
Hundreds of thousands of square feet, hopefully.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
JP or Joe D'Nardo, did you have questions?
No, I'm, I'm good with that information and I wait to hear when it's, uh, in, when they're scheduled, let us know what's going on, then we're all ears.
And, and apologies, I can't be more forthcoming and kind of tell you who we're working with, but uh, one particular tenant, um, who's kind of key to three or four or five, or maybe even a dozen others, is very, uh, cautious in, in how we, you know, what we can disclose and what we can't and, and so forth. And a couple of new ones that have never, never been in the state of Vermont, who again, um, like to make their own announcements, et cetera. So, uh, we'll, uh, God willing, uh, we'll be, we'll be, uh, hopefully, and, uh, hopefully we'll be able to do it in person, not, eh, eh, not on Zoom. Be able to, uh, show you what's going on and get comments and, and, uh, uh, let the whole town know.
Can you give us a timeline?
Um, huh, I would hope that in 90 days and, and at the very least, uh, you meet every month?
Uh, every other week.
Wow. Um, uh, 90 days, 90 days, I would say. And, and maybe put it on your calendar to, uh, invite us to, to one about three months out. If, if it's sooner, I'll, I'll obviously update you. But, but at this point, I would say 90 days is a good horizon where we can at least talk again and I can give you another update.
Okay. JP?
Joe, uh, Joe, I just have a quick question, Mary. I don't want to interrupt, but, um, does he have all the contact information with Bill so that he can keep, you know, that way he can keep us in the loop if we need to know anything?
Yeah, both. I think Mike and Bill talk regularly or they were going to. Uh, I'm not sure how regular, regular is, but, uh, again, I'm, I can certainly, yeah. I, I, uh, we have Bill's contact information.
Yep. Okay. Especially if there's anything we can do to facilitate what you want to do coming to pass.
A-absolutely. If, if, if the tour is needed and certainly they will be needed, I, I will, will, uh, offer up Bill who can sell Rutland as, as good as anybody I've ever met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Paul?
All set.
Okay. Sharon?
I'm just excited as a female who likes to shop. It certainly would be nice to have a place to shop in Rutland again. So I'm out for it.
Okay. Um, any department heads have any questions? I'm thinking fire, police? Questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Well, without.
Okay. That sounds like not at this time. So okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Anthony. Um, and Michael, we appreciate your participation and I think Bill has probably already put you on the calendar 90 days out.
Okay. Great. Hopefully we'll have, uh, some news to report back and, and thanks for allowing us the time.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Uh, Bill, anything else?
I, I, I do have a few things more, yes. Um, you have also as part of the email I sent out to board members today, a quote from Mike Rowe on some work he needs to get done. I'm sure he'll be ready to discuss that at his turn.
Okay.
Uh, you also have, uh, the write-in results for the grand juror position. Uh, so we can save that for the discussion on the town official appointments. We can have those results. Um, when we had the highway committee meeting with Robert Clark, uh, there were some options for path locations, uh, uh, discussed there. And he provided me with those maps, which are now attached to the meeting minutes, which I sent out to everybody just so you could see them, the various options for, uh, for your reference.
Yeah. Just so folks know, um, because we were talking in isolation, I think, when we were reporting on this meeting. If you look at the first map, C1, um, that is the one that the group who met up at the transfer station felt was the most appropriate. It's only one, one loop and it avoids, um, some of the sensitive areas there. So if you have any more questions, I think Byron, Byron was there and Mike Rowe was there. So please direct your questions there. Okay.
Good. There, uh, I also gave you some information on, uh, clean water projects, which came from the Regional Planning Commission. And I'm sure Barbara Polling will be very excited to share more information with you on her turn. Almost there. Uh,
Okay.
I got a call today, today from North Star Fireworks. They wanted to know if we would like to have our fireworks on the 4th of July again this year. Uh, they said we are one of their oldest customers and they are holding that date for us. We have the right of first refusal. So they have alternatives of July 2nd or 5th if we so choose, but we are, we have the option of the 4th of July, which is a Sunday this year if we would like it.
I'd say we'd grab it.
Yeah.
I'd go along with that.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to, um, take the 4th of July with North Star. Um, any discussion? Uh, when are we getting their usual contract bill? Do you know?
Uh, I, I don't have, she didn't give me that information. So when I call her back tomorrow, I'll tell her that we would like it.
Okay.
Rather than later. So, yeah.
Okay. So all in favor of having fireworks on the 4th of July, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. So you can inform North Star that we would like the 4th. Yes, please.
I will do that.
Excellent.
The last thing I have is the ordinances. Um, I have gone through all of the files that I have and compiled the most complete that I think we can muster. And then Barbara Polling sent me one that she had that was not even in my list. Uh, that was 10 years newer than the one we had online. So, um, I've gotten, I've now that one, that's our flood hazard one. So I have all of them pulled together. I have a binder that's been updated. So it has a new index uh, and a new list. And, um, they are ready for the various committees and departments to start reviewing at their pleasure.
Okay. Um, you'll remember, and Don especially, you'll remember, we used to have a red book that had, it was hardcover, red, that had, um, our ordinances in them, but they were, you know, rapidly becoming out of date. And some have been repealed and certainly many have been amended or should have been. So what we're, what we're proposing to do is
There it is.
Yeah. Send out the, uh, that's the one. Um, the pieces of, or the ordinances to the various committees that deal with highways and water sewer and have them take a look at the ordinances and propose updates to them. Um, so that's the plan. Rather than having one person do it or Bill do it all, um, we're trying to get it out to the committees and the department heads. So, um, be looking for yours and Bill will make sure you get them. And that's always something that should be on your committee agenda. Riveting stuff, I know, but necessary.
Well, the planning commission discussed it at their meeting last Thursday and they're ready to take on there. So.
Great. Good. Thank you.
And I think that is everything I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions with Bill from other select board members?
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, thank you very much.
No problem.
Bill, uh, Bill, oh, by the way, Bill, did, did you want to discuss any of that funding that came through today or is that on another agenda item?
Uh, from Lyle. So yeah, we got a, we got an email from Lyle Jepson, uh, some federal funding that's being funneled through the state. That's going to be, come down to local municipalities. There's been a, ever since he sent that out just a few hours ago, there's been a, a flurry of emails among that, among that list of what it can be used for. And they're trying to get clarification on it because it's not a little amount of money that's coming. So, um, we want to make sure that we are getting accurate information and he's working on that. It seems to be that, uh, it's going to be targeted to, um, uh, water and sewer and broadband projects are the, are the big uh, benefactors of what they're looking for out of this money. And then to, to work, to do projects that are related to the pandemic response. So we're, we just learned about this a few hours ago. So it's a, it's So we're, we just learned about this a few hours ago. So it's, uh, it's kind of a fast moving thing at this point. But I don't, I don't have a lot of information and they're waiting to get a real, true, accurate description of what's allowed before they want, before they said, "Yeah." And then to make sure the numbers are going to be accurate, they're, the, um, the, the money is going to be based upon a per capita rate. So we are in Rutland County, we're going to, us in Rutland City are, are two of the biggest, uh, benefactors of this. So we want to make sure it's going to be right before we go, go making huge, huge project lists. But yeah, it's going to certainly be a benefit to us.
It would be nice if we knew the, uh, you could give us the preliminary figures so that people have an idea of the magnitude of this.
Uh, I can, if you like. I can, um, we get back in here, make sure I have the right one. Uh, so based on the, the per capita rate of, of this, um, Rutland town is, at least on the, uh, uh, the preliminary sheet is $406,894. So, um, the, so 406,894. Uh, so they are, I, like I said, going to be, uh, Lyle's going to get back to us with the specifics of, uh, when, it sounds like it's going to be two payments, uh, one this year, one next year, and then four years to, uh, spend the money. So obviously we'll have to do some special tracking on whatever projects are related to it to make sure we're, you know, using it correctly. But, uh, yeah, this, this could be a, a big benefit to, to some projects we want to do.
Thank you, Bill.
Absolutely.
So let's make sure we put that on our agenda for our next meeting. And, and update on that. Maybe the numbers or the, uh, use of funds will be a little more definitive.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. If not, thank you, Bill. Uh, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Uh, good evening. Uh, in your packets, there's an updated budget status report, um, that was printed a little bit ago last week, um, before the bills were entered today. Um, I just kind of wanted to briefly go over it, um, in general. Um, for some of you, um, this is going to be redundant and for some of you it'll, it might be helpful. Um, but, uh, when I was looking at this for the first time, these reports can be a little cumbersome. Um, so what I basically do, um, there's three columns on each, um, department, uh, which most of you are aware, and it's how much on each line is budgeted for each, um, part of your department. And then the second column describes the money that's actually been used this fiscal year out of that budget. And then the third, um, column describes, um, if you have any money left over or if you're in, um, a deficit in a line. So, um, that's, I, I, we went through each department, um, for tonight and, um, wanted to see if there was anything outstanding that I noticed in the, um, budget balance for any line items. Um, for certain departments, I've already talked to certain people, uh, the department heads about, um, any negative numbers that I'm seeing. Um, most of them look great. Um, the one area that I am, and, and I'm sure that the department head is aware of, but I noticed a lot of, um, deficits in highway. And I just want to, um, make, I'm sure Byron already knows the lines that he's deficit in and probably already has a backup for them. Um, and mo, and most of them aren't significant enough, but, um, there is one line item that I'm a little concerned about and he probably already knows about. Um, so I just encourage everybody to look at that every year or every week. Um, I can print out, uh, the detailed reports for each department head such as this, um, instead of just a summary, if you wish. It's a little more helpful. Um, did anybody on the select board notice anything that they wanted to point out before I move on?
Folks, any questions?
Okay. Well, um, that was, um, what was that? Well, um, I'm going to put the budget status report, um, kind of to the side. And, um, I just wanted to quickly, uh, give an update on the office. Um, a couple of things. I have spent a lot of time researching and, and calling people. Um, I'm looking for a third person, um, to help me out. Um, not on a full-time basis, just kind of right now, um, getting us back up on our feet, um, with the amount of land records that we do have. I've reached out to several people. Um, but what I'm ultimately doing, um, right now, because it's a, it's a necessary thing that has to be done, like right now. Um, Mary Delene will be coming in starting next week. Um, she'll be our third person right now to, uh, to allow me to work on the land records so that we can get them back to the owners in a prompt manner. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that you'll be seeing Mary Delene once again next week. Um, for, we're going to discuss kind of how her schedule will look. Um, and then I also wanted to, um, tell the board that, um, I signed up for a webinar, um, that will be for, uh, brought to us from UVM, um, for town clerk officials, or town officials. And the part that I signed up for was, um, more information on all the, um, programs that are out there for digitizing land records. Um, and this will be, uh, presented by some well-known, um, people around the state that have used these programs. So what I'm hoping is for next meeting, uh, I will have a lot of information for you. Um, whether I can do that visually or, um, just talking about it. Um, we'll hear probably the pros and cons of each, uh, just as some information for all of us, um, as we're moving forward. Um, so I've signed up for that and, um, I just wanted to comment on the recent election and how well it went. Um, uh, I know that there were, um, some people that were wondering about the results of, of the election that night. And, uh, I just want to put it out there that I will never report something that I'm unsure of on. I always want to have, um, backup on everything that I say. So, um, that is why, um, the, the numbers that I reported were accurate the next day. Uh, I didn't want to give out any information that wasn't accurate the election night. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, and, uh, I believe that's it. I do have, um, all the documents with me from the election, if needed, for, um, talking about, uh, the officials that are to, needed to, uh, get appointed. So that's all I have.
Okay. Questions of Carrie?
Yes, Mary, uh, I see a question of the board first. Uh, is the, is that records, uh, the records clerk, the additional records clerk, is that, is that out of our budget or is that out of Carrie's budget?
I think it's.
Out of Carrie's budget. Pardon me, I didn't hear you, Mary. Somebody jumped on you.
I think we did. Can, Carrie, you probably know the budget sheets better, but I think we, um, we did have some money set aside for this work, correct? And can you tell us the line?
Yes, let me look here. It's in the general budget. I believe we used, um, oh, let's see if I can find it. Believe we set aside this year $4,000 to have help, if that wasn't this year.
I think it might be line 035153, Office Help and Miscellaneous Salary. Is that the one?
You got it. And, um, we budgeted four grands, um, and we still have some left over to use. Um, but I find that this is very necessary, um, so that we can get back on track with the amount of real estate that's been happening in town.
Yep.
Do, so, um, I guess my question is, do we, do you feel you have enough, um, in that budget to cover the hours that you, that you'll need?
Well, I'm looking at it right now and to be quite honest, um, I'm noticing that it may not be enough. Um, but that's certainly something for discussion. I, I don't want to cause any issues. I just know that we are going to need some help somehow.
Right. I just, uh, you, I just, I, I, I think it bears some discussion as to how important this is. Uh, it's, it's really not a small item and, um, I had a discussion with, with Carrie, a short, a brief discussion because I was obviously concerned that we're going to lose tax money. Uh, the, the, the property transfers, if they're not done, uh, in, in a timely manner and according to the, to the schedule that they're supposed to be done by April 1st, um, those people are not going to be properly taxed and on the tax rolls correctly. And then you've got to do proration and a whole mess of other things. So, um, it really affects the, uh, affects the grand list pretty severely. Uh, Carrie, could you speak to that just a little bit? I mean, uh, there's, I mean.
Why does she have to speak to it? We're all, we're all aware, Don. We're all aware.
Are you?
And there are, are you?
Are you?
There are, there are, there are other strategies that can be utilized. I know some, uh, clerks are closing their offices for half a day or a day, um, maybe even two days in a row or two days in consecutive weeks and dedicating the total effort to catching up. So there's different strategies that can be employed to reach this important goal.
Do you know, John Paul, how many hours it's going to take to, to, uh, clear up the backlog that Carrie has?
I don't think anybody can give you that estimate, Don.
Well, I, I went in and got it from her and I'll tell you, it's a substantial amount of work. It's, it's a, it's a really a substantial amount of work. And with this pandemic and, and what's been going on with property transfers and, and refinancings, uh, it's, it's a lot of work, a lot of additional work. And it would mean essentially if, if you use that strategy, and I, I understand what you're saying, John Paul, but if you use that strategy, there's going to be a whole mess of work, other work, other than just filing that isn't going to get done for the townspeople of this town if she closed the office, uh, as much as she'd have to close it to get this done. So I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I, I really would like us all to know just how much work it is. It's not a small amount. I mean, those.
Actually, I, I do kind of, Don, because I do title searches, have done. So I have a pretty good handle. But I think what townspeople should know is that when Carrie receives all these, although these documents have not yet been copied into the big books, they have been recorded in the daybook, which is the legal recognition by the town that the town clerk has received the documents. Now, are, are they behind in getting them into the big books? Yes, they are. But I think that's a pretty common complaint these days with the real estate rush that's happened. Um, I think, and also I'm trying to respect the fact that Carrie is running her office. And although we control the budget, we don't control the day-to-day operations in there. And if, I would encourage Carrie, if she feels she needs to do one of the strategies suggested by Don or suggested by JP, that she come to us and let us know. Um, but really it is her office to manage and we've, we've let her know that this is an issue and we're hearing about it. I've heard about it a bit and I've passed those comments on to her. So.
Good. Thank you very much. Well, I just, I just want her to know that she shouldn't feel constrained by the fact that she doesn't have enough money to hire the extra personnel if she needs, if she needs that time. So I would certainly be willing to find it someplace. I think we can probably find a few, a few thousand in our budget somewhere. So, thank you.
Mary, quick question.
Yep.
Uh, in this budget sheet that Carrie gave us, uh, line item 035210, Professional Services. Um, is that, what is that dedicated for? Is that dedicated for professional people? We need to have come in and help Carrie in the office?
Or could it? I think that's our cleaners, right? Is that our cleaning service?
It's, it's right under town hall building maintenance. So.
That comes out of maintenance. So there's 18,000 there that we've allocated for professional services. So to Don's point with the, the amount of work that needs to be done, and if we have some money in one account and there's 18,000 for professional service, I think Mary Delene would fit in that category. So I think there's funds there and Carrie can organize the schedule and get her work done. And I'm all for it.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm hesitant. Yeah, I don't have a problem. It's just that it's right under building maintenance, but it's right ahead of attorney's fees. So I'm not sure what we have used it for or what we budgeted for. But there is a category there, as Joe points out. Okay.
So, moving on.
Anything else, Carrie?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Um, just want to put it out there that I'm not trying to cause any issues or commotion. Um, and if you, if you want to have a private conversation with me, I am more than willing to do that to any select board member. You know that I'm open to anything. Um, and if you need me to look into what we use the professional service line for, I would be happy to do that. Um, like I said, I'm just trying to get back on track. And, um, it's, it, it, it was a challenging year as we all know. So we're just going to keep moving forward.
Okay.
I, 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 I think we need to give Carrie, and, and I know we don't run her office, but that we support that she find money within the budget somewhere to get what she has to get done. If, if it need, we have to spend a little more money, then pull it out of some, somewhere. But, um, Carrie, I want you to know you're doing a good job. Um, I don't think any of us is saying you're not. But what I think we're saying is whatever you need to get, what you need to get done is, I know I will support that.
Thank you. You've all been very supportive. So I do have to say thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mary, Mary, if I could, just say one thing.
Okay, Howard.
The grand, the April 1st grand list is, it's as of April 1st, but we have basically a couple of months beyond that to get all of these name changes and things done. It, it does not have to all be in place by April 1st.
Right.
It, it's, it's as of April 1st. And as you know, we don't hold grievances until June and tax bills don't go out until July. So, yeah, we do have a little extra time for Carrie to breathe a little bit.
Thanks, Howard.
Okay. Thank you, Howard. Anything else, Carrie?
Um, I think that would be enough for tonight.
And I, I thought the elections went very well too. I was, I was a ballot clerk. Um, and a question about the, I think we, you posted the tapes from the two machines so that people, or candidates could view them. And that's, that seemed to work out pretty well, I think.
Yeah, and we even, um, livestreamed the, uh, the write-in counting, um, with the ballot clerks. I think it all really went well. Um, honestly, I couldn't complain, really.
Yeah, good. And thanks to all of the, the folks who helped pull the election together. That was, I thought it was good. Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Barbara Noise-Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Hi there. So I guess, uh, at the top of my list would be the five reappointments, um, that we have for the Planning Commission, um, for three-year terms. And, um, all five of the people in those positions would like to be reappointed. Uh, they are Dana Peterson, Mary Beth Polley, um, our alternates, Norm Cohen and Jim Hall and myself. Uh, they are Dana Peterson, Mary Beth Polley, um, our alternates, Norm Cohen and Jim Hall and myself.
Okay.
I would move, I would move that we, uh, reappoint the five persons to the planning commission, uh, based on Barb's, uh, report that they're all interested in serving again.
Are, are they all residents of the town?
Um, they are all except for Norm, which is allowed by statute uh, for planning commissions, not for select boards, of course.
Right.
Um, but it is allowed. You can have, uh, as long as at least half of the planning commission are residents, that meets statute.
And where does Norm live?
Uh, in the city now.
Yep.
He, um, if, I think if you recall, um, he downsized, um, but couldn't find a condo or, or something to that effect in the town, so ended up in the city, much to his favor.
Yeah, I think Norm is the only attorney still on the planning commission.
And then there's that. I mean, there's, there's some key players, uh, for the planning commission, like Howard, a Lister. Um, is good to have. Mary Beth is, is good for, um, some of the engineering work she does. And then, yeah, it's always, it's always good to have a lawyer, at least one.
You sure of that?
No, no.
At, yeah, at least, okay, no more than one?
Yeah.
Too late. Okay, motion's been made by Joe to reappoint. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of reappointing the five to the planning commission, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, what else, Barbara?
Um, so you were talking about ordinances earlier. I think the planning commission would like to look at the subdivision one. There's some references there to zoning and some other things. So, um, first we have to see, um, what's required by statute to have in a subdivision, subdivision ordinance. Um, and if we are allowed, there's a couple tweaks we'd like to make there. Um, and then, yeah, we should talk about that flood hazard ordinance. Um, the one that's up on the website right now refers to maps, flood maps that date back to seventy-eight. So, um, there's certainly been more mapping done since then and, and could have been, uh, more accurate since then. Um, Velco and Thomases are, um, are doing a, uh, the, uh, Velco is purchasing some land from the Thomases there at Post Road and Route Seven North. Um, they, Velco wants to do some expansion there. We'll have a public hearing on that on April first. There's about thirty-five acres involved there. Um, the pocket park and the, the grant we got from the state, um, we're making, um, some progress there. We want to meet first with, uh, GMP since they're the primary landowner there and, um, sit down with them and see where they are at this point and let them know what, what are, what we would like to be doing, what the grant, uh, is calling for and such. And I guess the only other thing, uh, Bill mentioned, um, an email that we sent from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, the other hat I wear. Um, that was just to alert you that you, you will probably be hearing from the Addison County Regional Planning Commission about, uh, clean water, um, and clean water service providers. That's the system the state has set up to deal with Lake Champlain TMDL and also Lake Menfromagog. Um, it has designated, um, entities around the state to handle the cleanup monies and to oversee the projects, the clean water projects. So, we'll, uh, Rutland Regional Planning Commission will be working with Addison County Regional Planning Commission on the Otter Creek watershed. And, uh, there's another watershed in the Rutland area that we'll be working on as well in that regard.
Does this mean some money for us for things that we would otherwise have to undertake?
Um, it, it could mean some money, some projects in the town. Um, if the town is interested, um, there is a council that will be set up. And you can become a member of that. That council will be deciding what the projects are, who gets the money, what the priorities are. So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. It's, it's all of the clean water funding money for, for, it's basically the cleanup of Lake Champlain and Menfromagog. All of that money is coming through these entities.
Okay. Questions for Barbara? Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next we have Mike Rowe, the Town Recreation Director.
Hello all, how are you?
Hi, Mike.
Um, just a couple of things. I need to thank our volunteers and just give me two seconds to get through their names for, uh, very successful and very smooth, um, youth basketball. Um, Greg Fuller, Dennis Mosher, Alex Grimes, Tom Veldy, Pat Whalen, um, and Nate Belomo, that, uh, just did a wonderful job following all the protocol. Kids, it was just nice to see the kids out play. If you got a chance, we were live streaming their games. And that was, uh, that was pretty cool. So people were very happy about that. So that was great. We are star.
Looks like you just froze, Mike.
Hold on, I'll get him.
Okay.
Get that?
Nope.
No.
You're back.
All right, what'd you miss?
That whole second topic.
The whole second topic was baseball. I don't know what this happens every time. Baseball is underway. We're just waiting for guidance from the governor. Um, we've started signups and we will go from there. Uh, but we are trying to plan a season. We're just waiting to see what happens. And then the last thing I have on my list for you is, um, thinking of spring, which it's, it's already, because we sprung ahead last weekend, um, and getting the pool up and running, we need to upgrade our chemical feed system. And so the quote that I hope you have, um, that I sent to Bill is for, uh, an automatic, um, feeding system, which is something we do not have. We currently have pumps and, and, uh, feeders that were probably there close to when the pool, actually no, when it opened. But, so we are, we are looking, it's very, it's a challenge at times with our size pool is keeping the pH balance just correct and the chlorine balance correct. Um, and this will allow it to automatically corrections, um, as a need basis. So it's something that I would like to use out of our depreciation account to upgrade our current chemical system. And so Alan, um, has given the quote, uh, to do that job. They are the, uh, only kind of basically game in town. Um, I believe they are on our preferred vendor.
We've lost you again, Mike.
We got to use some of that grant money to get him some new computer equipment.
So, um, if you will pull out the, uh, price quotation from Alan Pools and Spas.
Can you hear me again?
Uh, now we can, yes.
All right. Well, how far did I get this time? This is crazy. I listened to the whole entire meeting, but when I come on, Bill is doing this. I know he's doing it.
Oh, yeah, totally.
So what did I, did I explain?
Hey, Mike, Mike, just be glad you're not a cat.
Good point. Good point, JP. So I'm just asking for your approval to, uh, kind of start this process rolling and, and get it ready uh, and get it ordered and get it set up when the time is right.
So is there, okay, Sharon's moving to, I'm assuming to, uh, approve the price quote from Alan Pools and Spas for the,
Yeah.
Okay.
JP and I, JP and I did talk about it because we're in that committee, but, um, I, I have to tell you, it's a safety issue, too, that we have the proper pilots in that pool.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded and the estimated cost, and this is without the electrical hookup, hookup, estimated cost is sixty-one ninety-five. Um, and how much is in our depreciation, recreation depreciation fund, Mike?
Uh, I don't know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty K, we have enough. And that's together, that's together. I mean, remember, we divided a couple of years ago when we started, um, our long-term planning for the, hopefully of a new pool. So, we, there's plenty, uh, plenty of money in there, um, for this purpose.
Okay. Questions or comments from the select board?
Well, thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
We haven't voted yet, so.
I won't be frozen. I'll be here if you need me.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion to approve the quote from Alan Pools and Spas, please say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have approved the request. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Good. With that, spring is guaranteed to come now. All right, Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Uh, yes, good evening, uh,
Hi, Byron.
Just a few items I'd like to, uh, run by you folks. Um, uh, let's start with, uh, the shared use path. Um, we did some test pits today, um, to ascertain the nature of the soils up there for, uh, this, the, uh, operational stormwater permit part of this, um, shared use path design. Um, those went very well. Um, so that, uh, and, uh, Robert Clark thought that maybe by early next week, he would have a set of plans and drawings for me. And hopefully we would be able to set up, uh, another committee meeting, um, Mike Rowe, uh, Mary Ashcroft, uh, anybody else that needs to, uh, or feels they need to be involved there. And, uh, we'll go over the, the, the final draft of the plans, um, for that path. So that'll be coming up pretty quick. Um, does the select board have any problem if I go down through and start in on the tree cutting for that shared use path? Um, I have talked with both landowners, um, uh, uh, where the easement is and both are, uh, quite excited that, uh, that pro, uh, project may even get off the ground, um, later this summer. Um, we still have the, the stormwater permit to obtain and the, uh, Act two fifty permit. And then we have got an amendment to our two fifty permit for that. We're also, as part of that two fifty permit, there may be an archaeological component to that. Um, I have reached out to Scott Dillon, uh, at the state and have, uh, he, he probably, he thought last fall it would probably be this early this spring, uh, before he'd be able to come down and make a site visit.
Yeah. Um, Byron, as to your question about beginning tree cutting, I think it's frowned upon until you get the Act two fifty amendment in hand.
We don't,
Right.
We don't currently have any permit, um, filed.
You have the blanket permit for Northwood.
Right, but we don't have the permit amendment and we have not filed for that permit amendment yet.
Right.
So, so technically, we're not in violation of anything, are we?
JP,
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, you violate it in spirit, if not by the letter of the law. I don't think it looks good. I think you need to wait until all the A Ts are crossed and, yeah, it's got it.
Okay. That's why I brought it up.
Okay.
Um, we have, um, the manhole, um, that we couldn't find, we have found it on top the edge of Cove River Road, buried about two feet deep. Um, I had an outfit from the Hampshire come in that has a special camera that's mounted on a little special crawler. Looks like a kid's toy, but it actually actually walks through the pipe. Um, we did get a look at the manhole, um, that's, uh, underneath the railroad tracks. Um, there's some debris in it, uh, normal sewer type debris. It's not, uh, um, in other words, the manhole's not collapsing or anything of that nature. We did get a look at the cover. The cover's all intact. Um, everything seems to be okay there. Um, that line probably should be jetted at some point. Uh, there was, there was, uh, one particular place where the little crawler was actually spinning in the mud. Uh, so that's, it's an indication that there's probably a dip in the pipe right there. So that would be a maintenance item every five years or so, probably have to jet that line. Um, so we can plan on that. Uh, I'll meet with the sewer committee and we'll, we'll go over that and, uh, you actually can review the video, um, at that point, should you want to do that. Um, we took care of that. Um, there is a, I have almost completed the, uh, the, uh, sewer inventory. Um, that was one of the components, finding that manhole, but we have just one manhole left, uh, that we know exists. Um, it's over in the Flori Heights area and, uh, I think we can find that by scaling some dimensions off a map that I found down in the tail, uh, town office. And there again, that's probably a buried manhole. Um, but we should be able to find that without hiring any additional help to, to do that. Um, that will complete the, the inventory. But during the process of taking that inventory, um, there's a manhole off the end of Ranberry Road. Um, it's in the swamp and the last time that I looked in that manhole was probably three years ago. Everything was okay. The manhole was doing fine. Uh, now it has developed leaks um, in the bricks. In other words, uh, the, uh, frame and cover, um, usually are bricked up to bring them to a, a grade. Um, those bricks are leaking. In fact, in one place, there's a stream about the size of a pencil that's, that's running into the, the manhole, um, and adding water to the, to the wastewater stream that's essentially just trying to drain the swamp and that's going to be impossible to do. Uh, so that's a project needs to be done this summer, uh, would be to, um, remove that frame and cover, remove the bricks, um, apply mastic and a concrete riser and then put the frame,
Oh, no!
And bring that back up to, uh, uh, above, uh, the water level of the, of the swamp. So I reached out to Zapata to find out if there was going to be a, a permit required to work in the wetland. And as long as we don't, uh, as long as we stay within two hundred and fifty square feet, uh, and don't, uh, don't work outside of that area, it's considered normal maintenance, routine maintenance. And there would be no permit required. She did want to know how I planned to do that work, um, because this is a first for her and she didn't really know how we were going to be able to drain the swamp and be able to safely do that work without dumping a lot of swamp water down into the sewer system. So, um, I'll have to send her up a, kind of a game plan that I have in the back of my mind, but we will have to, uh, probably sub that out to somebody like Fabian or Belden. But we can draw up some specifications or something and, and get a, uh, proposal from, you know, some area people to that project. Um, your next meeting, um, I will have paving bids for you. And then the select board meeting after that, we'll have the, uh, bids, uh, for the Gleeson Road color project. And the last item is the, uh, uh, cutting of the trees in the cemetery by Town Hall. Um, there's two large trees there. I think they can be, uh, winched and pulled in, pulled onto the cemetery without damaging anything. Uh, and then there's some smaller, uh, one to three-inch diameter brush type stuff that can be picked up and cleaned up. And then there's a box elder, uh, on the far end down towards the corner. However, um, because the box elders are probably in the railroad right away, um, I submitted the, uh, application today to V-Trans for the flagger. Um, that is the procedure now. We used to just call the railroad office here in Rutland and you know, you, you took care of it that way. Now I guess it's a formal process through V-Trans and will require certificate of insurance and a few things like that. Um, the tree cutting is probably not going to be a problem. I've, I've talked with, uh, Mr. Pulaski today. Um, in fact, he left an email just before the meeting tonight, so I've In fact, he left an email just before the meeting tonight, so I've got to answer that. There, but in regards to placement of a fence out there appears that somewhere along the line, the railroad acquired from the town some of that cemetery land. So in order to put a fence in there that will encompass any potentially buried remains, their historical people are going to want to ascertain exactly where this fence is going to go. And it's probably going to lap over in one area onto the railroad right of way. So that's going to require some type of easement from the railroad for that. So placing the fence around the cemetery is going to be a bit more of a process in a paperwork process than just getting an okay and putting the fence up. I think the next step is probably going to get, there's probably going to be a meeting with Mr. Pulaski and Mark Fitzgerald, actually right on site and probably try to determine exactly where that fence is going to be and try to determine exactly where the town line is and property lines are. So I probably will stop over at Town Office tomorrow and take a look at that old map that's down in the old vault and see if there's actually any dimensions there or or names of headstones or something that we can use to ascertain exactly where the last buried remains might be. And I think that'll be helpful. Other than that, that's all I have.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, that was enough.
Yeah, it was. Select Board members, any questions of our road commissioner and public works commissioner?
Nope, all good.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Byron. Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi, only a couple of things tonight. In the last two weeks, we've had six fire calls and four of them were mutual aid. The thing I want to talk about tonight is trying to get our meetings and trainings back in person. I just wanted to get, get your guys' feelings, since the governor has a new mandate and just about everybody's got a Corona shot in the department. There's six people that have not. So I'm just wanting to get your feedback on restarting trainings and meetings.
Okay, JP, do you have any advice for us?
I had spoken to Chris earlier and it made sense if he follows the governor's mandates as they're being adjusted that he should be able to commence his meetings. And, you know, you're going to have to follow the guidelines, you know, temperatures, mask wearing, that kind of thing. But yeah, I think the governor has authorized this, so I wanted to ask the full board, I wanted the full board to be the one to authorize it, but I think as long as we follow the governor's mandates, we'll be, we'll be in good shape.
So what are we up to? Gatherings of thirty-five?
Yeah, well, we have thirty-five on the roster, but there won't be that many in one room.
Okay. Masked and distance and, yeah.
Yep, we have that. We have the thermometers and the sheet to fill out, so.
Okay. Other select board members?
Chris, are, are you thinking about like doing the monthly meetings just at center for the added space so you can be spaced out instead of trying to cram everybody in the smaller meeting room at McKinley or having to put apparatus outside?
That's a thought, yes, until it gets warmer when maybe we can kind of sit more outside with the doors open at McKinley Avenue. But yeah, at center would probably be the best idea.
Yeah. Okay. I don't, I don't see a problem with it as long as, you know, they, they're well aware of what the guidelines are and, you know, they're well managed, so they'll, they'll follow the rules and they should be safe.
Okay. Does any select board member have a problem with the fire department proceeding to in-person meetings and trainings with precautions taken?
I have none. I have a question though. When, when are we going to, when are we going to consider doing this?
Well, back to the town health officer.
You want me to do my health report now, or you want to do the fire business?
Well, Don, if you can hold on your comment and we'll get down to JP and a couple more items. Okay, anything else, Chief Clark?
Uh, no, that's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Yeah, so I have a couple of things here. First, to go over the daily log report, I think I sent you all guys a copy of it this time. As you see, there's quite an increase in the deaths, forty-one point eighteen percent. Most of that comes from our Green Mountain Plaza and living situation between the two more hells. I think that's a major factor there. I did talk to a couple of select board members about maybe doing something different as far as arrest and trespass motions aren't working. The rules have changed. We can't put people in jail for continuation of the offense anymore due to law changes and COVID. So I'm open for suggestions. I have mentioned a couple of things, but that's what I have there. I do have another matter. I think it might fall under employees, personnel. If you want to go to the executive session for that.
Okay, so we'll hold on the executive session till later in the meeting if there is that request. Any questions at this point for our police chief? Okay. Thank you, Chief. You're going to hang around for the executive session later?
Yes.
Okay. All right, John Paul, Town Health Officer.
So we had our discussion about the fire department. The governor's recommendations are starting to loosen up for meetings among individuals and family members, and I'd refer you all to the website if you want the particulars on that. So as we go forward, in response to your question, Don, as the governor authorizes, you know, the release of the conditions, so will we.
So I take that as a, we're not there yet.
Right, right. No, we still have to comply with the current rules in town, but they're, they're talking maybe as early as next week or the week after for some modifications there, but you can't get a definite answer from them until they actually tell you what it is.
Okay.
No, JP, I was just wondering what the difference would be between the fire department holding a meeting with thirty-five people and us holding a meeting where we only have five plus our department heads and we rarely have more than two or three citizens that actually attend. I just, is it the space that we're in?
It's, it's a combination of the space and the fact that the department has much stricter protocols, the temperature, the masks, the social distancing. But it's primarily spaced on and, and it's rare that we get thirty-five members attending a meeting.
Right. So you anticipate that we probably would be able to meet in our usual space sometime in the fairly near future?
Every time I've anticipated that, I've been wrong, so I'm just waiting to see. Okay, I guess we play it by ear.
Yep. Anything else, JP?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, committee updates? We've heard from REC. We've had, I don't think there's any other committees that have met.
No, not in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, okay, so. Update on project list. I had asked that we start thinking of projects and given the hour and the other items that we have to do, maybe we can slide that update to our next meeting. Is there any objection to doing that?
No objection.
Okay. So, Bill, if you could remember or remind me on that when we're putting the agenda together.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, now, down under new business, A is taken care of, B, board to assign select board members to committees. I have roughed out committee assignments and Bill has the draft that I would like to circulate. I can do a couple of things. I can just have Bill send them out to you. I know that not all of you are have video on Zoom, or I can read them off and or we can just, you know, present this at the next meeting. What's your pleasure, folks?
I, I just do have it added to our next packet, Mary, and we'll just go from there and we can look at it. That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, but that's two weeks without committees meeting, so.
Why don't I?
Is there, is there anything really, other than that water sewer thing? And that's a pretty big committee of quite a number of us. Is there anything other than that that's really biting you?
No, I think that's.
And we got, yeah, yeah. And we got, and we got half of that money that's owed to us, promised.
And I just noticed a typo on the list anyway, so, Bill, I need to talk to you before you send it out.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll circulate this for the next meeting. I'll circulate it as soon as I can and then we'll take it up at the next meeting, okay?
Well, actually, no, it's not okay.
All right, Don, what's your pleasure?
Well, it's fine because all of you have been there, so you know what committees you're on. You're probably expecting you're going to be on the same ones or whatever. I haven't. I'd kind of like to not have to wait two weeks to find out what committees I'm on. But, but it's up to you, Mary. Do what you want. I mean, could you, could you just send it, could you send it through the, through the outlook, have Bill send it tomorrow? That'd be fine.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, yes.
Yeah, okay. So we wouldn't wait, we wouldn't wait two weeks to find out.
No, no, I was going to send it out sooner and then it will be on our agenda for the next meeting.
Good, thank you.
And just, you know, just, just because some people have been on committees doesn't mean they're necessarily going to be on the same committees. I have listened to requests. I have put, every select board member will be on five committees. Every select board member will have a chance to work with each of his or her colleagues. And some of you, most of you got at least one or two things that you wanted. And if I have made a relatively, if, if, if there is some discomfort but not a whole lot, then I've probably done a pretty good job. So I'll leave it at that and you folks can take a look at it. Okay. Let's take a look and we see under new business, board to review and approve preferred vendors. We have already done that. Let's go on to D, which is board to review town officials and fill positions by appointment. So we've taken care of planning commission. So we're back to, looks like page three of the handout, which is other appointed officials. If, so I'd ask you to pull up page three of your handout and we have, let's see. The ones that are highlighted include the SWAC representative and the SWAC alternate. Bill, have you talked with either Larry or Bill Bauer?
Yes, they are, they are fine with being reappointed.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion on those two, Larry Delvenery as SWAC representative and Bill Bauer as alternate.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those folks are approved. Then down to regional ambulance service. Is there any motion on that one?
I'd nominate Sharon Russell.
Okay. Sharon's been nominated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, if not.
I think I would have, I think I would have a little bit of discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Don.
I'm not hearing anything, Mary.
I'm sorry, I said go ahead, Don.
I don't know, my, my sound has kind of gone.
Okay.
Are you hearing? Are, are you hearing me?
I am hearing you, Don. Are you hearing me now as I'm talking?
No, I, I just, I, I'm a little nonplussed as to why after eight years on the regional ambulance service, I wouldn't be asked if I intended or would like to stay on there because everybody else, like the planning commission and the others, were asked if they wanted to stay. You didn't have any discussion about that. You took the, I mean, I'm, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve as your representative for eight years on the regional ambulance service. And I'm just wondering why, i- if this is, is, is this, is this my reward for being elected on to the select ward? Did I get, I get dumped from the regional ambulance service after serving for eight years? Nobody's ever questioned me. Nobody's ever had any complaints about my service on this board.
Okay, JP, you were the maker of the motion. Do you have?
I'm not hearing. I'm not hearing anything from the board.
Are you hearing me at all, Don?
Right now I am. The, the sound has been going back and forth through the whole meeting on, at least on my computer, and I have a really good system, so I don't know what. But I, I did hear you that time, Mary.
Okay, I will say that Bill has cautioned me when I turn my head, this is a very directional microphone on this laptop, so when I turn my head, that may be that I faded out, so my apologies for that. And as long as you can hear me okay now, is there any discussion on this motion? Is there any discussion?
Well, you've heard what I had to say, so, you know, that's.
Okay.
That's it. I'm, I'm just, I'm very disappointed in this, in this board for taking this action on me. Uncalled for. Pretty nasty, really. Not what I expected from my fellow board members as a welcome to my three-year term in office.
Sharon, your box is lighting up and JP's, yours was. Do either of you have anything you wish to say?
No, I didn't do anything, none to the, to the thing, Mary.
Okay.
I'd move, I'd move the question.
Okay, question's been moved. All in favor of Sharon Russell as Rutland Regional Ambulance Service rep, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay, looks like the motion is three to one, so the motion carries and Sharon's our rep. Okay, and so Bill, walk me through the rest. We have a layer of coal that's an annual.
That's correct. So we have our, I'm not sure what you, what you call them, but there, there are traditional appointments. Honorary appointments for, uh, for this. We have the wearer of coal, the tree warden, pound keeper, the inspector of wood, and three fence viewers.
Okay, so we'll start with, um, let's see. Wearer of coal, I think there might have been some interest in, among folks who might still be.
Is this a contested race?
I don't know. Presently, it's Israel Mack. Okay, so, uh, tree warden is Byron Hathaway at this point. Pound keeper is Paul Williams. Inspector of wood is Byron Hathaway. Fence viewer, Steve Russell, Charles Hemmenway, and Howard Burgess. So let's take that block right there. Is there any motion?
So move.
JP moves the appointment of those. Any second.
I'll second those, Mary.
Okay, Joe's seconded. Any discussion?
I'm going to recute, since my husband is one of those fence viewers.
Yes, okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And one abstention, Sharon. Okay, the motion carries. Now we're down to Rutland Regional Transportation Council rep. Is that, that's not an annual, is it?
Yes.
I think it is, yeah. I've been trying to fill in some of these, we didn't, we didn't have the terms before, so I've been trying to fill some of these as they go along, but, uh, yeah, that one is going to be an annual one.
Okay. So, uh, presently it is Byron Hathaway is our transportation council rep.
Yeah, actually, I think, I think that might be there twice. This was, it was listed twice, so, but I'm looking at it now. We have the transportation council and alternate down below, and then the Rutland Regional Transportation Council rep up above, so I think that's probably the same.
Okay.
The same thing.
Gotcha, so.
We'll eliminate one of those.
We'll take one of those out.
Say to her.
So.
You screwed me big time.
No, I'm not going to say that.
Okay, um, so, transportation.
They're gonna put you down every single step of the way.
Transportation council.
Drive you into the ground.
Byron Hathaway, transportation council alternate is James Hall. And this, these are annual appointments. Is there any motion on those two?
So move.
I move that. We appoint them as, um, Jim's not here, but I don't know if Byron's still on and he still wants to do it. I'd say we just reappoint the two.
Okay. Um, motions made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you've approved transportation council. The last one on the page is regional marketing quality of life. I don't know if this, I, I went to a couple of meetings. I don't know if it's still active, so I have no idea. So what, why don't we reserve on that until we find out if it's anything, okay?
Isn't that a lifetime appointment, Mary?
It is not, no.
It doesn't say annual and it doesn't say anything else, so I figured it was a lifetime job.
Well, I didn't know that what the, what the appointment term was on it, so that's why it was left blank currently.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, backup, transportation sup, the station supervisor and, uh, Larry Delvanary, transfer station attendant, Bill Bauer. Is there a motion on that?
So move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, so, other appointed officials, the fire chief, Chris Clark, I think that is not what we do here. I think that is something that is voted on by the fire department and then recommended to us. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we'll pass over that one. Health officer, John Paul Fagnant.
She'll move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
So, I don't think that's up for reelection now. That's a three-year term.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll, um.
I don't know. Has it, Bill, has it been three years?
I don't, I don't think so. I will, I will, I do have the paperwork from when you were appointed, so I will, I will look into that one.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure we're, we're inside the window.
All right, what about the remaining ones, which are forest fire warden, Joe Donardo, emergency management director, Marty Wasserman, town service officer, Ed Dumas, um, town administrative assistant, Bill Sweet, and Rutland Regional Planning Commission rep, Bill Mattson.
Oh, Mary, my, my term is five years and I think there's a few more on it.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
So let's take that one out of the mix. We'll take, as we did with health officer, and we'll double check that. So we're emergency management director, Marty Wasserman, town service officer, Ed Dumas, town administrative assistant, Bill Sweet, Rutland Regional Planning Commission rep, Bill Mattson. Any motion?
Well, Bill is, is Bill hired till we fire him? I don't think we have to redo Bill, do we, every year?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah.
I think some of those terms were, were put, that, that column was never there, so, you know, as some of these came up, I wanted to keep, start keeping track of them better. So I don't know if you want to designate them as, you know, as needed or a specific term for any of them.
Well, let's do this. If there's a motion, let's approve all of these, um, for, beginning right now, and then we'll double check to see if there were terms associated with it. Is, is that acceptable?
Well, move. There's with me.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
There is one, there's one additional item we have to handle for the emergency director. Because Marty uses his own vehicle, so, um, I would make a motion that we provide Marty with the same uh, agreement that we have provided with the other, uh, people in town, the constables in the fire depart, uh, police department, when they're using their own vehicles to respond, that the town's coverage is primary.
Okay. Is there?
Is that a motion, JP? JP, is that a motion?
Yes, if you would treat that as a motion, please.
Then I'll second that.
All right, motion's made and seconded on the use of personal vehicle for the emergency management director to be comparable to that of the police and fire. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And, uh, Bill, if you check on those, um, couple of things that we didn't do?
Yep, I've got notes for those.
Okay, thank you. Um, Chris Howland, are, are you still on?
Yes, I am. Um, yeah, my comment was, if we were going to advertise for those, uh, positions that you appointed, um, the planning board and what have you, but, uh, we're over and done with. We made our appointment, so.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Chris. Um, I know in the past we have, when there is an opening, we have advertised and we have, um, interviewed, but in this case, they all re-upped on the planning commission, so.
Well, they're just, um, I, I guess we explained the, the lawyer there and the ability to, the outside, people need not be community citizens, uh, but, um, the, the chair is an employee of the regional uh, planning board, and I don't know if that might put some conflict, uh, into, into the planning board.
Okay. Um, Barbara has, it does not take a salary from the town for her work, for the town, on the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, town grand juror. Um, that is one that wasn't on our list. Um, we have, in the past, I think the, um, we, we haven't, we have appointed someone in the past. My recollection is that the position was kind of downgraded by statute and much more limited, um, authority now. Do you want to take any action on that? I have included the, I asked Bill to include in the packet the list of folks who got write-ins for town grand juror. Um, if that helps your deliberation at all, is there any, um, any thoughts either way?
I think it's important to maintain the position because we may be, um, someday forced to prosecute our own municipal violations, and if that's the case, we'd want to do it through that office.
Okay. Do you have any motion?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar with the candidates that submitted names in terms of their qualifications, so I don't.
So do we want to defer that to a later meeting?
Sure.
Okay. So Bill, if you could put that on, this is town grand juror appointment. For our next meeting, and we probably should put something on the select board, um, page requesting anyone interested in the position to let us know. Is that fair?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Um, new business, we have already closed the grand list. We voted on that. We're down under F, which is board to discuss library move ad hoc committee members. And, um, I would point out that we have since learned that the library move is now off because the Heartland developer, um, is no longer interested in having the library, uh, take over a portion of the College of St. Joe's, so unless there's objection, I would say we, we don't, we don't appoint the ad hoc committee as we had discussed at our pre, previous meeting.
Well, I had made, I had made the motion for the committee, uh, so I would make a motion that we dissolve the committee.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to dissolve the ad hoc committee. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Do we have any other new business?
Um, I, I'd like to bring this up again, uh, in relation to that last, uh, motion that we made. Uh, I, I really think that, in view of the fact that this is still an active proposal, I don't think it's as dead as people think it is, but I think the, the townspeople need to know a lot more about this, and I believe that we should have the two board members that we appoint to represent us on the library, uh, come into a select board meeting and you could, you could schedule that, Mary, at, at their convenience. Uh, but I think it should, it should be sooner rather than later so that the board can be fully informed as to what their process was. I have a number of questions that I'd like to ask them, but I'd like to do it in a formal proceeding rather than just talk to them individually.
Okay, um, I have no problem with that, so I'm trying to, JP, do the reason I'm calling on various people is because your boxes light up, um, so I'm assuming that you're getting ready to say something, but that may not be the case, so my apologies.
Yeah, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. All right, um, let's see when we can, Bill, if you would, please schedule in, it's Eddie Oguzolik and Anita Dutch. Okay. Thanks, Don. Down under old business, we still have tabled the guardrail at the intersection of Post Road and Post Road Extension. We still have tabled the board discussing a policy for signs on town-owned property. Um, we have dealt with the SWAC and the regional ambulance service. Under old business, E, reclassification of Quarterline Road near Boardman Hill and any other old business. Any of those need to be taken up at this point? Okay, if not, um, I believe our police chief wished to discuss a matter in executive session with us. Is there a motion on that?
I'll move, so I'd move second.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session with the police chief for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? All right, uh, thank you. Let's see, the chief is back on, and could you escort other folks into the waiting room, please, Bill? Okay, the select board is out of executive session at eight twenty-nine. Is there?
So I would make, I, I would make a motion at this time that the board approved the plan of reorganization as proposed by the chiefs of police, resulting primarily from the, uh, pandemic-related issues of different populations being in the town. Uh, and that the following, uh, salaries be implemented. The chief of police would be seventy-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. The deputy chief would be sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eight. And the patrol positions and the SRO positions would be at fifty-two thousand each.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Um, Joe, I'm taking that as an aye in favor of the motion, right?
Yes, you were a little quick. I was a little slow.
I'll slow it down just a bit. Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
Okay, um, I think that is, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, we did have something that, we had two liquor permits that weren't dealt with, but while we have the chief here, um, one is an outside consumption permit. It is from Ninety-Nine Restaurants of Vermont LLC. Chief, did we have any complaints about this?
None that I'm aware of. I would, even if, if I did, I'd know about it. We never had a problem there. I'd recommend we do it.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve outdoor consumption, um, at ninety-nine.
She'll move.
Motion's been made, it's second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then there's another, um, two thousand twenty-one liquor license renewal application. This is for Max Convenience Store, one fifty-one Business Route Four, Center, Rutland. Um, it's for SS Von. Yeah, oh, it's Lee Sherman, Sherman v. Allen Petroleum, okay. Sorry.
We've never had a problem with him at all.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second, uh, she'll move.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, so you'll have to sign these as well when you. Um, so you'll have to sign these as well when you come in. And the one for the outdoor consumption, there are no, um, lines at the bottom. I've signed at the bottom, so you can add your signatures there. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? We did get a nice card from ARC thanking the voters for their support, the ballot item for them passed. If we're all done, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Good night.